Tonight's Milford School Committee meeting is being broadcasted live by Milford TV and local media. If you'd like to have a copy of this program, you can reach out to the administration. I'd first like to take a moment of silence. Recently, Joe Stoico, one of the great teachers of Milford High School, recently passed away thirty year plus, so you guys, moment of silence? Okay, before we begin, I'd like to introduce, we got some lovely kids over here playing some music for us tonight. You guys like to come up and introduce yourselves?
So we have the Milford String Trio. This is Evan Mackey, he's a senior on violin. Zoe Tillman, senior on cello. And Emily Rose Maddock, and she's a sophomore on violin.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, they have a one piece that they'd like to perform for you called Hornpipe.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now can I ask you guys one question? How long have you been playing for?
Since third grade.
Third grade, across the board?
Um, yeah, for me.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
What did I say? If I was Bruno dancing with the stars, I'd say that was magnificent!
No, it's been, I mean, absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you guys so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just record a wedding or something, very professionally done.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was awesome.
It was great.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, that was very nice. Moving forward, next moment, uh, next, next part of business for the approval of minutes, can I get a motion? For the minutes? I got a motion from Jen, second by Mr. Walsh, all in favor? All in favor unanimous? Next part of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody? Announcements, correspondence?
Scott? Mr. Chairman, thank you. So just, really just a few things. One, I know that our middle schoolers, our seventh graders, just returned back from, you know, just after Thanksgiving holiday. They went and did our annual pilgrimage, if you will, off to nature's classroom. Heard great reports, kid has, the students has always had an amazing time. And really just heard great reports back from all faculty members and parents that went up there. And it really is just such a great experience that I think each of these students goes through. And, you know, there's some, for some of these students, this is their first time away from home. For some of the parents, it's their first time having their children away from home. It's, it's, it's sort of become, you know, one of those rites of passages that we have through our schools. And I really just, you know, wanna make sure I just, you know, thank the students for their, you know, tremendous performance. We always get great feedback from our students in Milford Public Schools when they go there. So just wanna thank them and the parents and all the faculty and staff that are involved in that. It's no small feat to try and coordinate that number of students moving that far for that amount of time. And being away from the classroom for a week and sort of getting them all regrouped back. So just wanna say thank you and, and, and great job.
Cool. Mr. Walsh?
Jim, if I may, so I wanna say, great job to the town, Sunday afternoon was the Santa Parade. I know it doesn't have anything to do with the schools, but I'm going somewhere when I talk about this. Jen and I were talking about it earlier. And it was a great parade, largest crowd ever, the weather was great. I happened to be with Will Kincaid and his sister, Mrs. Roy. And over the noise, over the noise, and we were at Town Hall, I heard a little boy yell, "Mrs. Roy, Mrs. Roy." And she recognized him, and she ran across the street, she gave him a big hug and a kiss, and she stayed with him for five minutes. And she came back across the street, and the point of my story is, we have some emails going back and forth right now. And I looked at her and said, "It's not all about grades, is it?" And she said, "No, it's not." And I want people to understand that, and maybe I'm going a little off base, but you can, you can take a stance and you can criticize the Milford Public Schools. And I've said for many, many years, when you do that, you've never been in the Milford Public Schools. And when you witness something like I witnessed on Sunday night, it's, it's, I'm not saying that education isn't important, and I'm not saying that grades aren't important. But the love and the dedication that our teachers have in this district for our students, again, was shown to me as it has been many times over nine years, that they really, really, truly care. And those are the people that make a difference and make this district a special, special place. And I just wanted to make sure that I said that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I would like to say congratulations to the sixth grade football team. I'm sure, which you all have known, because I've been boasting about it for the past month.
Was there something going on with that?
I helped coach on the sixth grade team, and we, we won our second Super Bowl this year, which is no easy feat. We also...
Belichick would be in trouble.
We also, the kids also, we also also won our first state championship game as well. We beat a team that we lost miserably to last year, and we pretty much demolished them this year, so. I wouldn't be doing any justice if I didn't give these kids a shout out, plus they all would kill me if I didn't anyway, so. It was my congratulations to the sixth grade team, great job.
Great job.
Great job.
Absolutely.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman, also, this, this coming Wednesday, December thirteenth, I believe it is, is the Stacy Middle School Holiday Concert, or Winter Concert, Christmas Concert, however that's being titled this week, and this year. So certainly, you know, it's...
You're killing me, Scott.
I know. The, you know, certainly, what we heard this evening is a perfect example of what is really started in our elementary schools, and this is just another step in. And the way the students really perform and practice and take this so seriously, certainly invite one and all in the community to come and join and support our students as we, as we try to do with every event.
And the music program is fantastic, Scott.
Phenomenal, from top to bottom.
Alright, alright, next item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Anybody? Alright, no invitation to speak. Next on the agenda, not on the agenda, but we do have some correspondents from high school, like to give us some updates? Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Um, just a few updates, there's not a lot. We actually held a blood drive on November twenty first, right before Thanksgiving break. About forty-one people signed up and donated their blood, and each person saved about three lives, which was pretty incredible. And then we also had a sports and club showcase on Monday. Every sport and club that the high school offers was represented. And it was a pretty good turnout, we had lots of eighth graders, and a lot of them actually emailed Coach Boucher and said that they already decided that they wanted to come to Milford and knew what they wanted to do, so that was also pretty good. And each team had posters and brought their trophies, and the clubs had awards that they received. And then tomorrow's actually our senior formal, December twenty-eighth, at the Doubletree, at seven.
Very nice. Thank you, anybody got any questions?
I don't think we caught, your name.
Your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm Kyra Alves.
Thank you. I did it.
What year are you?
I'm a senior.
And what, have you, have you gone through applications yet?
Yeah, just waiting to hear back.
Just wait, you're playing the wait game, as a lot of students, I think, at this point are.
It's a very long game.
It is. Kyra, where's your first choice?
Either West Virginia University or the University of Delaware.
I love hearing where the students go to and apply to and everything else. Is there a particular field of study you're gonna go into at this point?
Sports management, I think.
Excellent, well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Both great, all great schools. You know why folks that are older than you always ask students what they're looking to state, what they're looking to major in and what can they do, we're looking for ideas for what we wanna do when we grow up. So we'd love to hear what you're gonna look at, so, good luck to you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyra.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Eagle Scout recognition. We have Milford High School sophomore Brendan Duluck, is that correct, Duluck? Who built the new ticket booth for the high school turf. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the project you did?
Alright, I'm Brendan Duluck, and I obviously built the ticket booth, the one at the front gate of the turf. And I chose that for a project because I've been playing Milford football for about seven years now, and, I don't know, I just love the program, I love playing football. So I just felt like the program's given so much to me, I wanted to give something back. And it was a long project, took about two months to complete. Yeah, I couldn't have done it without the help of one of my Boy Scout leaders, Mr. Ken Matondi. He's a master carpenter, he helped a lot, he helped out a lot with that.
I'm just talking to your dad, tell him to take a picture of you, I said, get a better shot of you. He's kinda getting a bad angle back there.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I think you did a great job. I coached, and like I said, I play football down there, and I saw you down there very often building that and seeing the progress of that, I mean, I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it's, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive, it's amazing.
Thank you.
I mean, congratulations.
Thank you.
So just, wanna echo that, you know, Joe's, thank you. It's, you know, any opportunity we, we get when we have an Eagle Scout, and it's certainly no small feat to go through. You've started, what, how old were you when you started in scouting?
I was in first grade.
Okay, yeah, and now what year are you in school?
I'm a sophomore in high school.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's a long commitment.
Yeah.
I live right across the street, right by the high school, so I actually saw your progress every day.
Oh, wow.
I saw it in the mornings when I went to work, I saw it in the afternoon or evenings, sometimes late night, when I was coming home from work, and you see the progress every day, and the amount of effort and work that you put in it. It's really impressive, and it's great, it's, you know, certainly as a school community member, thank you for that. But it was great to be able to sort of watch your progress each day, and I, I looked forward to walking, you know, driving by and saying, "Oh, he's back at work again today." You put a lot of effort in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jen?
I just wanted to add, like Scott, I walked by many times over the summer and saw you there. You did an amazing job and thought of a project that was really meaningful and will be used for a long time to come. And I also wanted to acknowledge your parents back there, they were there with you the whole way. And I think it really does speak to the role of our job as parents and what you can accomplish with that support from your school and from scouts and from your family, so congratulations to you as well, great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
I always tell the story, for years I sat on the board of the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, and every year we would award a scholarship. And I was particularly taken back, one year we had twelve or thirteen applicants for the scholarship, and eleven or twelve of the applicants were Eagle Scouts. And what they had to bring to us was what their projects, you know, were. And I'll name some of them, I won't be long, but there was a young gentleman from Franklin that got invited back by his elementary school teacher. They had been donated a piece of land behind that elementary school, and she wanted to build like an outdoor science center. But she hadn't needed a reason, she needed a way to get the kids up an embankment. He actually built stairs with a landing and flower pots to get up to that area. There was a young gentleman that started a fund. He took old purses, as crazy as this sounds, he took old purses, he was able to trade them on the market, turn them back into cash, and sent it to Ghana to build a school for women. And, you know, just, again, your project out here, just over the top, over the top. And, you know, not to make light of Brownies and Girl Scouts, I think they're all, they're all very, very important organizations. Mrs. Parsons makes a great point, you know, kudos to your parents, to your parents. You know, without their support every single day, they're the role models. They're the people that show you, you know, which way to go in life. And obviously you're choosing the right way, and congratulations and great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Good job.
Great job, too. Alright, next item agenda is recognition of student athletes. Mr. Boucher?
So what's up with cross country?
Yeah, you'll, it's all cross country, yeah.
I just wanted to real quickly say, I'm sorry, I mean, with Brandon as well, you know, he checked in with us, and thanks to the Boy Scouts, we now have two of the most professional ticket booths, really on the planet, for high schools. And, you know, there are times when I'm looking for people to come and work, the MIA games, high school games. It's not an issue anymore, because his is sort of like the Taj Mahal. He, he brought in lights, he's got it all set up, I don't really know how you did all that, but I do know his family was here multiple weekends, I was here with them, I didn't help at all, but I encouraged them to stay. I encouraged them, right? But it, it's great that, that these, these young men choose to give back, and the fact that we have two Eagle Scouts who decided to, you know, take these initiatives just speaks to the, to the families and really the Milford community, because it just, it really makes our, our facility that much more professional and fun, to be truthful, so. Thank you guys for all that you did, we appreciate it.
Now you guys are on.
You guys wanna introduce yourselves?
Do you wanna, yeah, drag, drag one up, grab that one, take that one.
Maybe, maybe make Peter do all the talking, boy.
You guys, yeah, introduce yourselves, we got two seniors here.
I'm Mick Carey, I'm a senior captain this year.
And I'm Jack Lil, I'm also a senior this year.
I'm Anthony Nastaro, and I'm a junior.
So I'll, I'll jump in, their, their head coach, long story, the missus has a master's program tonight, so he's, he's home taking care of two very young children, so he asked if I would stand in, I was happy to do that. The coach we elevated three years ago, with the cross-country programs, we have a boys head coach, girls head coach, so that each coach could spend more time with their programs. You really have to credit these three guys right here for, in my opinion, and all of the boys, of course, but these three guys have really forged ahead and, and really pushed the program so far forward. The, they are back-to-back champions, they probably will be sort of, sort of quiet about that. But last year, it was eighteen years prior to that, where Milford had run a cross-country championship in any league, so. And to win it in this league, you know, I've run in this league, I've coached in this league, I didn't really, I would not wanna have coached against this team, I'll be honest with you, this was a power-packed team. These guys have worked three or four years to really, really build this team up. Jack was sort of our figurehead, he's become this really great runner. He's heading to UMass Lowell, Division One, he'll be competing there. I know they're gonna ask us, so do you know where you're going yet? I'm just jumping ahead.
I don't know yet, I wanna go to UMass Lowell though, too, so.
Okay, cool, cool. Would it be for, for track as well?
Uh, I might be a part of it, but I'm looking for, going into music for a major.
Very nice.
Great, great music, so.
Yeah.
Music education in particular.
Yeah, UMass Lowell has really moved forward in a lot of their programs and a lot of their athletics as well. And Anthony was, you know, he might have surprised people in the league, but he didn't surprise us. He's, these two here are Hockamock League All-Stars this year, you know, competing in the toughest running league in New England, so. He's, we're looking for him to carry on, no pressure, but we're looking, we want a three-peat, like the crowd that's coming in next, to try and get three in a row, but certainly we will, we'll be happy with two in a row, and, and they've really put cross-country back on the map for Milford. And I think what's nice about it is, now the league really knows that, to, to win the boys' championship. And I think the girls is a couple of years behind their building, it really goes through Milford. If you can handle what we have here, then you got a shot at it, and if you can't, well, welcome to Milford. We'll keep making things happen.
Alright, so, Scott, question?
So thank you guys for coming in, and congratulations on, on signing with, on signing and committing to UMass Lowell, Division One.
Thank you, yes.
That's, I, I don't know the math on it and the statistics on it, but I know it's a very small number of high school athletes that end up being able to compete at Division One.
Less than one percent, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's, it's amazing, I knew he'd have it. Point seven, just, just in the ballpark. But what I also think is, is great is, in addition to cross-country, it sounds like you're involved in music.
Yeah.
I would guess, what's your instrument?
I play percussion.
Okay, alright. You guys do other sports as well as cross-country as well?
Uh, we both run indoor and auto track, so, running all your own.
Yeah, so, so I mean, we're, and, and this is what I love, is, it's, you're involved in multiple programs, you're involved in multiple sports, we've got cross, you know, in, in business we call it cross pollination between multiple, multiple, multiple groups, which is fantastic. You know, I just, I couldn't be more proud of you guys and just keep up the great work. And you get to carry the torch here, so to speak. We get some folks here, some, hopefully you get some, some peers you're mentoring that can join you, not, join you behind the table as these two gentlemen move on to UMass Lowell hopefully next year, so. Excellent, congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I couldn't get it when I was in high school a long time ago, and I still can't get it. I, I, I drive home at night and I see unfortunately the Hope Dale team outrunning, and I'm, and girls and boys in there, run, 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 I'm like, how can you keep, it reminds me of Forrest Gump. And, you know, kudos to you, kudos to you for, for doing that. But I think more importantly is that I went to the Hall of Fame banquet, and there's a tradition in this town that's very strong, very strong, and you're part of it. You're, you're part of it now, and you will always be part of it. And, you know, maybe ten or fifteen years from now, you get inducted into the Hall of Fame, but you gotta remember, you're part of a very, very strong tradition. Mr. Boucher talked earlier about community, community is very important. And you're part of a very, very important community, and you should be very proud of what you are accomplishing and what you have accomplished. And I say, great job, congratulations, I wish you the best, I wish you the best in life.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, gentlemen.
I'd like to say congratulations to you both, to all three of you, and good luck to whatever you do. The out of school community, we got a couple, couple gifts we'd like to give to you. If you guys wanna, I'll just go up and give them.
No need to get up.
I see this on these days, these are becoming very lucrative.
Congratulations, guys.
I came home with one, and the two boys were fighting over which one was gonna get it, so I let him fight it out.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I've been looking for one of these.
I was gonna say, you gonna get the noisy group?
You can leave it there, because the girls are coming in.
I'll tell you what, I was a soccer player growing up, we only ran when we were in trouble. So I'm always impressed by a cross-country and the track team and what they're able to, what they're able to accomplish.
It's brutal, I see him, I see him riding down Route sixteen.
The level of discipline and commitment.
Oh, it's huge. Hello, ladies.
Hi.
You're not nervous now, are you?
Just a little.
Little, but why?
I don't know.
Everyone here, we all set? Alright, cheerleaders, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Heather, would you like to tell us why you're here? Which we already know, but...
We won states again, as you can see, you wanna turn around, we are back to back to back to back, champion. So, we are here again, because you guys are awesome and super supportive, so thank you for having us.
No, no problem. Would you like to talk about what's going on?
This is a video from our league championship, same routine, I don't have the one from states here today, but this is from leagues, so we won our league title, our regional title, and our state title, so it's a winning routine no matter which way you look at it. I can tell you that this was their, probably their best performance of the whole season as far as start to finish, so.
So, before you did this, is there, didn't you guys have kind of...
Well, before states, we had a little bit of a debacle, so on the way in, a carload of our cheerleaders was rear-ended. And unfortunately, that sent one of our, one of our girls to the, to the hospital. So thankfully, the team is well-rounded, and we were able to put in an alternate last minute and go in and compete with the team. She did a wonderful job, Caitlin, woo! Did a wonderful job picking up, just jumping in routine, and in gym pack routine, it's not easy to do, and I'm thankful that they're well-rounded and were able to do that. And thankfully, the cheerleaders in the car are all okay, that was the most important thing. It definitely threw our day off, as you can imagine, we were a little bit frazzled. It caused us to be a little bit late, but just as professionals do, they walked in, did their thing, and walked out with a trophy.
That's, that's, that's pretty amazing, Scott was telling me that before, and I was pretty impressed that.
Yeah.
Now, is this, is this what we're gonna see, you got this accident and then this?
No, this is two competitions before, same routine, I don't, I didn't have the states video set. And it wasn't perfect.
This is the best one I've seen.
This is the best one, so I figured this would be a good one to show. But nonetheless, it doesn't deter from the fact that they, that they won, and it's the same routine, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so, in, in true Heather and cheerleader fashion, they're being really humble. They're saying the states wasn't perfect, I had an opportunity to go and observe and watch this. You may not have thought it was perfect, and somebody who knows nothing about cheerleading except the fact that I've been watching it for five years, it was amazing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I heard about, obviously, that morning, what had occurred, prior to you guys leaving. There are professional organizations that would have been thrown off and would not have been able to step up and do what you did. It was absolutely incredible, and the fact that you guys are that disciplined and that professional and able to execute with the level that you did. I happened to be walking out of the arena, and you guys don't know this, as I was walking out that afternoon after you performed and were already received your state championship and already won, I walked out, and there was a herd of people walking out, just along with you guys. And one of the parents, we happened to be just sort of chatting for a second, and he said, "Oh, where are you from?" And I said, "I'm from Milford," he said, "Oh." Said, "I'm so happy that they changed our division." "Why? Is it because I used to have, we always used to compete against Milford? And we know that when Milford came to compete, if they hit their routine, it was never close." You guys always just step up and just perform well, very, very well. So I know you experienced a lot of sort of turmoil that morning, and just wanna make sure that I congratulate you and really, you know, as I know you would be humble about it.
Well, the day started in tears and it ended in tears.
It ended in a lot of tears, there were a lot of tears.
Obviously, it ends with a spectrum, so, I mean, you know, they are extremely talented, they worked hard, they knew what they needed to do, and thankfully, we had a, a team of kids that could just go in and know what needed to happen in order to make their dreams happen. Because that's what they've been working for, is the same goal, same dream, the whole season, and they weren't gonna let something of that nature deter them. Obviously, we were concerned about our cheerleaders at the hospital, but we were checking in, and we met for some cake after.
I think God's for text messages.
Thank God.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Set it up? Yeah, you can play. Yeah, just press the button.
The champions of Milford High School!
So, it's a shame your coach isn't isn't proud of you. You're not excited at all. That's awesome. That was amazing.
And it helps them, because when I get excited in the front, it helps organize them to compete with their routine, so they tell me all the time, they wanna see me scream and cry. I mean, scream when it's happening and cry when it's over.
I think it'd be better if there was a camera on her.
So, there's a video where they do a YouTube bit from our puckamuck league last year. They had a professional video person who was videoing their team and me at the same time. So, there's a video on YouTube of me behind their league competition on YouTube, that's stellar.
Absolutely amazing, that that was, that was awesome. I'm open up to any question, Mike?
Um, let me start by saying, there's an old saying, fashion repeats itself. I'm so glad to see you with those sneakers on, because that's what I wore on the basketball court years ago. Before there was Air Jordans and everything else.
Yep.
Um, just another example of um, the great diversity in the Milford Public Schools. Um, having a son that played three sports most of his life, um, sometimes you get focused on just that and uh, but you need to get refocused and realize um, really what's in this school district and uh, the cheerleaders and uh, all the other programs, the the music and the art programs. To have you went back to back to back um, programs is just amazing to me. How you do it, you know, watching this vi- you know, video tonight, I don't know how you do it. Some of you are more nervous standing here tonight, and I'm saying to myself, how do you do that? I'd be petrified doing that and yet you're here tonight. Um, but just um, just amazing, just amazing, uh, great job, and we're all so proud of you. Um, because what you do and what you've done, um, and again, is is uh, you're part of a legend, you're you're part of history. And uh, you know, hopefully someday you'll come back and uh, into the Hall of Fame, but.
Just had that thought in mind.
Yeah.
Maybe one day, within like ten, two, fifteen, twenty years, whatever it is.
Yeah.
We'll all be back and uh.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'll be old and I'll have kids.
Yeah, but um, congratulations, great job, and you should be very, very proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you.
I also wanted to say congratulations, you know, um, you'll know this someday, but as your kids get older and they move through all these different stages, so, you know, you think your kid goes to basketball or whatever it may be, one night a week or one Saturday a week, and um, I have a freshman here right now who's um, so we're experiencing high school sports for the first time, and you realize, this is not a small endeavor that you've taken on. This is every single day, captain's practices, summer practices, vacation, you, you never get a break, you never get a vacation. And um, I'm sure you're keeping up your grades, because if you weren't, you wouldn't still be here with us. Um, but the perseverance that you have displayed, that I've never seen anything like that, my body doesn't move that way and it never has. And and for most people, it it, you just, you don't even know how you do it. So, the fact that you also had that great accomplishment, with something that you had to overcome and you were able to put that aside and focus on the task at hand, um, congratulations, you really, really earned that. So, good for you for your your three in a row.
Thank you.
You know, you never, you never appreciate a championship when you're in the middle of it, and I think you're gonna look back, especially like, how many, how many of you have been on all three championship teams?
Wow.
That's pretty incredible, like, very few people in in, Coach Boucher will attest to this, very few people ever experienced like winning a state championship.
Any championship.
Or any championship for them now.
I don't have the percentage on that, but it's really low.
It 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 really is, and and to really kind of wrap your head around winning, you know, not just one championship, but but the three is incredible. Um, so I, you know, I I I'm always blown away when you guys come back, and I kinda kidded with you when I walked in, you guys are back again. But but it's.
I'm still waiting for my seat at the table.
It really is. It really is impressive. The other thing I wanna say is, um, I always wanna thank you guys, you kicked off the um, middle school presentations, and you know, seeing it on the video is one thing, but seeing it live and the energy that it built in in the gym when all the middle school students were watching was incredible. And and I really appreciate it, so I wanna say thank you for that and congratulations.
Thank you.
I had one more thing, um, I didn't wanna leave you out, because it it also just occurred to me that, you know, as you watch your children on these teams, and by the time you get to this level, you've encountered so many coaches, and some are outstanding and some are okay, and some you tolerate and you hope you never have them again. But some coaches really, really motivate kids and and the people on the team, and you've done that. Um, so for all the things that you're saying that you do, because you know they like it and, but it's beyond that, you're motivating them to work together and you're, you've also gotten them to achieve. So, it, you could have a great team and be happy and not be winners, but um, you've done both, so really congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And and again, I'm sorry, real quick, I just wanted to say, I I agree with uh, Jen, that uh, great job, you know, coach has a lot to do with it. And uh, I talked about earlier to you girls about legends and about um, and uh, Mr. Boucher. He's got a big, big set of shoes to fill. He's in a job that there've been a lot of great people that have done uh, wonderful things here in this district, and you're doing a lot of great things. So, uh, congratulations, congratulations to you and all your coaches.
Thank you.
So, Coach, if we can, just to um, y- y- with each group that we have come in front of us, we always ask the, ask the athletes now the, what you're worrying here for, cause there's a lot of you. Is we had the cross-country individual, cross-country guys come in earlier, and we ask them, you know, what grade they're in and add just go through their name. There's a lot of you guys, but if you'd be willing to do that, I I think it'd be great to just have you guys, your na- just first and last name and what grade you're in.
Well, do you guys think you'd always want to start?
Um, Chris, somebody can Davis, and I'm a senior.
Um, Stephanie McCray, and I'm a senior.
Gianna Landzada, and I'm a senior.
Um, Ava Gonzalez, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ariana Cavino, and I'm a junior.
I'm Jada Crowley, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Heoka Yancy, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Haley Cleary, and I'm a junior.
I'm Caitlin O'Connor, and I'm a junior.
I'm Makayla Gerard, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Madeline Kager, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Caitlin Baglioni, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ally Nesta, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Emma Kincaid, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Julianne Moore, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Gaddy Johnson, I'm a junior.
I'm Lizzie Kincaid, and I'm a junior.
I'm Zoe Byrne, I'm a junior.
I'm Kathy Shiller, I'm a sophomore.
We are missing a few, do you mind if I give a shout out for them as well? Sorry. So, we have Chevel Easther, who is a junior also. Tiago Pachico is a freshman, Ashley is a gamey, who is a freshman. Is that it?
Yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure I give them a shout out, is it?
And I'm Kayla Johnson, I graduated in nineteen ninety-seven.
I I, they they, I don't, I don't always get to meet with the teams like this, I never take up practice time, I I try really hard not to do that. Th- this is the embodiment of what we've been talking about the last couple of years, and and it's on at the back of every Leadership Academy t-shirt that we've had for three years, it's practice hard to win easy. What we try to do is really talk about the mentality of, if if you can conduct yourself, like you, like you saw on on the screens, in practice, multiple times, time and time and time again, then when you go out in front of a big crowd like that, it it's not easy, believe me, I've been there, I know what it's like, we all know what it's like to compete in front of people. But when you do it multiple times and it becomes your level is up here, at that gold level and and maybe even platinum with with this type of program, then that's, you know, you you just continue to perpetuate that. And and for me, as the, I appreciate all the kudos, but as the athletic director, this is where you want every program to be. I mean, a a back to back to back, I remember being here last year, and we weren't joking, we said, maybe we'll be here again this year, well, here we are. You know, it's it's a full year later and to to win back to back state champions, unbelievable. Back to back to back. I I don't, I don't know how many other programs in the state, going all the way back to the early nineteen hundreds in any sport, could say they've won a state title three years in a row. I I don't, and maybe I'll, I should look that up, but um, I wanna say thank you to you folks publicly, to this coach who just, you know, practiced hard doing easy. They're here, sometimes I think they maybe sneak in on Sunday mornings, I don't know, but we're not open yet, but they've done a great job, and I will tell you, walking out, when they were done, I I always walk outside when I go to the competitions, um, just chit chat and check in, and we just kept going. And I had my two sons with me, and they're like, Dad, it's not over yet, we never leave before any, what is it, are you, are you feeling okay? And I said, it's over. Well, Dad, there's there's, I I think there's four or five other teams that have to go, I said. No, it's over, it's done. And you very rarely get to have that finite understanding, but I've seen you guys compete, I watched, believe it or not, on Saturday afternoons, I watched college um, cheering and whatnot. These are some of the most athletic people we have in the school, you know, they have solidified that cheering is a sport. But, you know, to be able to walk out with four or five teams able to, still competing and know, I knew in my heart, this is over, it's done, the trophy's there, see you later, we'll go home and and just, you know, celebrate. So, I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you publicly.
And I I think Coach Boucher, I think you, I think you brought up a good point, which is, you know, there there has been that question raised in years past is, and whether you know this or not, is cheering a sport? I I don't know how you watch that.
Yeah, no.
And have that even be a discussion.
No, it's not here in Milford.
It's a sport, and you guys are tremendous athletes and performers.
I mean, I've been here a long time, this is my seventeenth year coaching here at MHS, and uh, I've seen and I've heard and I've been involved in various conversations about cheerleading being a sport. And you know, I tell them every day, it really doesn't matter what other people think of you, because the amount of effort and hard work that you put in and the outcome that you get is all what's important. Because the athleticism they show in all aspects is is incredible. So, um, we've had various conversations throughout the years of of my coaching and uh, and it is definitely a sport and um, they work just as hard, we're here just as many hours, we are a family from day one to day one hundred and eighty-five, whatever, how many days are in school? Um, been out for a while, I guess. So, um, you know, just working hard and doing what they do and not really caring about the thoughts of other people that maybe not understand. That's what it is, it's just a non-understanding.
Um, show them that video.
I will, carry it around.
Two things, before you leave, um, I think you guys are looking to request um, out-of-state field trip. Kathy, would you like to teach?
Yes.
So, Heather, if you just wanna touch states, that that we were here a few weeks ago, the uh, national competition was originally approved for South Carolina.
Correct, yep.
And they're here to request.
Dallas, Texas, at the end of January. So, we were originally gonna go to Myrtle Beach, cause we were thinking it would give us more time to do fundraising and stuff, but actually, in the long run, it's actually more um, money-conscious to go to Dallas, it's actually cheaper, and Dallas is actually one of the two largest national high school cheerleading competitions in the country. There's UCA and NCA. UCA is in Orlando, Florida, NCA is in Dallas, Texas. Um, it's a giant arena, um, it's a good stage for our kids. Um, there are teams from across the country that will be there, um, so I do appreciate that you granted our request to go to nationals. We would like to request a transfer of location to um, to Dallas. We would be uh, leaving um, the twenty-fifth and returning the twenty-ninth. So, they would uh, be in school for more than half of the day on the twenty-fifth, the same amount of days in this case, but.
Um, I don't see it for all. I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like under old business, if we can, if we can jump to that real quick, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adjusted uh, timeline to approve the out-of-state field trip request for the Milford cheerleaders to attend nationals in Dallas, Texas.
Do you have a second? All in favor? You guys?
Thank you.
Before you girls leave, I'd like to, if we have the school committee.
You must have been busy shopping.
A couple uh, gifts.
It's not a little lamb.
This will be the last.
This show, he's amazing.
Cool.
Give you these real quick.
Thank you so much.
I think I do a back to back to back trip.
Congratulations.
Yep.
That's all you?
Well, we got four in five years.
Honestly, God, when they started coming, I was like, God, I mean. I get the biggest kick out of them when I see them with those sneakers on. Now they're wearing a hundred and fifty dollar, all hair and flaky, everything I'm like.
Congratulations.
I just wanna grab one, cause it's hot. Hot stocking.
Perfect, thank you very much, thank you guys so much. It's like a hot commodity.
What is it?
It's just. It just got.
You gotta take yourself.
And then it becomes stand.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good night, guys.
I don't know what it does, but I hold it up like that so I can uh, impress it.
Alright.
No, I don't know, like the weed, so whatever it is.
Next item on the agenda for tonight is the Milford Public Schools scheduling of school events. Um, I believe this was for conversation on scheduling school events as parent teacher conference meetings or what have you in line with our school committee meetings. Do we have an update on that?
Yes, we do. So, we've, we've done three things to try to avoid these types of conflicts in the future. The first is um, I sent an email to all of our principals to make sure that they're avoiding, scheduling major events on school committee evenings. The second thing is, we discussed it at our leadership team. And third, we actually put um, and this is where technology comes in, in the Google Calendar, each day, there's a school committee meeting throughout the year for all the principals. So, when they are scheduling events, they're able to avoid these nights. Um, you, we're never gonna be perfect, but we need to be better, and that's what we're gonna try to do.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Yep.
Um, next item on the agenda is reported superintendent of schools, um. Craig, would you like to?
You've just promoted him.
I'm sorry. Kevin?
Joe leaves for one meeting.
I like him better.
Yeah, everybody does. So, uh, we've got two topics, school choice is the first, and then um, Kyra spoke a little bit about the arts, athletics, and activities, um, MHS showcase, and I wanna speak to that a little bit as well. In your packets are um, some information on school choice numbers. I wanna give a quick overview and then I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have. The school choice numbers continue to trend positively this year. The net change year over year was a positive nine. This represented an increase in seven additional students choicing into the Milford Public Schools and two fewer students choosing out. In the past three years, the gap closed by twenty-nine point five percent from one twelve to seventy-nine. We expect this trend to continue over the next several years. I wanna thank the marketing committee for their hard work and creativity. There's been a concerted effort to educate and share information with members of our community about all of the great opportunities and programs available in the Milford Public Schools. I also wanna recognize our teachers and administrators who regularly share what is happening in schools and classrooms through Twitter and other social media platforms. And I, thanks to an investment from the community as well, over the past two years, the technology students have access to is unmatched. And the infrastructure rebuild has supported this rapid deployment of devices. Milford High School graduates entered college at a higher rate than the rest of the state, and students continue to get accepted and enroll in the most competitive colleges and universities in the country, including Harvard, Yale, Princeton, Boston College, and many others over the last few years. So, we we continue to trend positively over the last two years, um, and I anticipate this is a direction we're gonna continue in.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Just if I may, I I know this has been certainly a big topic, and thank you for the data. But though I'm pleased to see that we're seeing an increase in the number of students that are coming in, which is good, uh, do we know what grade level they're coming in at?
Uh, it's it's a, it's a variety. Actually, the document, you can't really tell, because it kinda tracks like where they're going through. Um, it's a variety of places, like a number of, one one trend that I think is fantastic is we're seeing a lot of our our teachers and faculty members actually choosing their students into the Milford Public Schools, which I think is a fantastic trend, because that speaks to the quality that they're seeing in their living every day. Um, we're s- we're seeing it, I think, a lot of times at the transition points, that's where we see like the ins and the outs. So, at kindergarten, second grade, well, actually kindergarten, third grade, sixth grade, and the high schools, it tends to be where we see the most of the movement. But, and there's really no pattern within that either in or out, but that's where we see, the natural transition points are where we see kinda the most, the most new movement, if that makes sense.
Okay. And then, uh, you know, I I think, though I'm, I'll I'll cer- I'll certainly take the win of the two students. Um, I I'll be honest with you, I'm I'm really hoping that that number really starts to accelerate, um. Because with the, with the, with the two students, I I guess, is there, are we able to track that? Is it that, is it that two less students that are still residing in Milford decided not to choice out? Or did that fam- or was it that two families or a family may have moved to another town and now we're, that may have moved to that other town?
So, I would say it's it's neither of those two things.
Oh, okay.
It's actually um, it's actually just the net change.
Okay.
So typically, when a student either chooses in or chooses out, they tend to, to stay or, or stay out. Does that make sense? So generally, if you look at like the, some of the tables I put in the, the packet, if like, say there's twelve seniors who have choiced out. Those twelve seniors come off the books and a certain number of kindergartners will choice out potentially. And so the net ends up being a net difference of two. So if we have a big number in a particular grade, that's gonna potentially impact us greater than like a smaller number of kids in, in the senior year. And there'll be some movement in and out, but generally, that's what's gonna drive it. So we should, you know, our numbers are generally in the teens over the next four years for the high school students. So we should see that, that gap closing and the number of choosing out continuing to drop is, is what I'm anticipating. But it's really driven by like the number of kids in each, in each given grade.
Yeah, just looking at the numbers here, the, the, the big classes with, it looks like, with kids that are, students that are choosing out are really, eighth grade being the high water market, twenty-two. Followed by, followed by fifth grade, which is nineteen. And then we got a few eighteens in fourth grade and sixth grade and, you know, the, the sophomore class, the tenth graders. Then it starts to drop off a little bit at sort of the sixteen to fourteen. And then, you know, first grade, it's interesting, first grade and, and eleventh grade are, are both eight. Much, much lower than, than really any other grade, any, just, that's just the way that the cookie crumbles or just?
I would say it's, it's tough to tell like a given number because that could be, a couple of things could have happened. It could have been all the kids in one grade or it could have been over like, especially in eighth grade, it could have been over three or four transitions that that happened. Do you know what I mean? So that's not necessarily like twenty-two kids choiced out this year, but there's twenty-two kids in that class that over the last nine years have choiced out. You know, I can't see it, like, in the last couple of years, I can't see a definitive pattern. And, but we are seeing, the trend we're seeing, which is positive, is there's, there's significant interest in choosing in. And we weren't even able to accommodate all of the choice in requests because we like to maintain class sizes as well as we close grades off. So if we just open the door without any, because we have kind of rules and engagement at each grade level for class size. And once we hit that number, we have to close the grade out. And so we could have, we could have probably brought in, and I, and I don't have the number in front of me, but it's a, a pretty significant number of kids that we weren't able to because a particular grade closed because we were full. But we are seeing, you know, I think positively, the choosing out is definitely leveling off. And the choosing in is, the interest in coming to Milford is increasing, which I think are both very positive for these.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I, I like the way the trend's going naturally. You know, we, we now have three years of, of a positive increase in our, in our net, as far as school choice. And we had the numbers, we have the numbers, I don't have them in front of me as, as far as the graph that we had a, a year or so ago. But, you know, it was, it was ten years leading up to this, this big delta. And, and so it's not gonna be a, an immediate correction and, and I'm just happy to see the, and satisfied to see the, the way that the numbers are trending now. And I think we just have to keep doing more of what we're doing and fast forward a few years, I think the number's gonna be a, a lot closer.
Yep. And, and I think what's, what's gonna eventually happen is we're gonna, if, if the trends continue, like you said, and you're, you're absolutely right, it's not like flipping the switch. It's, you know, when, when, when families make that choice, it's a very kinda well thought out choice, whether it's in or out. And they tend not to move either direction once, once they go. But, you know, I think we're gonna get to a point where it's gonna be more and more difficult to bring students in because we're just not gonna have the space for them.
Yeah, and I, I think we had, we had trouble pinpointing exactly why we lost them over, over a ten-year window. So it, it's hard to do any kind of auto correction to, to bring them back, so to speak. And I, I just, again, think we need to go forward doing, doing the best we can, doing what we're doing and, and we'll, we'll see better and better results every year. I, you know, again, just, just my opinion.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's what we're seeing too. I think you're exactly correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think what's important, if, if you look at the data that the superintendent supplied to us is, and if you have a question where the marketing committee is and, and the performance that they're, I guess, saying, for lack of better terminology, performing is if you look at the eighth grade level. So in two thousand, two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we only had ten students choices out in the eighth grade. In two thousand sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, we had twenty-two. That's the breakpoint, to me. And that shows that, and I've had many, many people come to me since we created the marketing committee and say, I never realized you offered that much at the high school. And the reason they didn't is, in no disrespect to any of you, sometimes they just didn't know. And so by creating the marketing committee, and I mean the whole picture, the cheerleaders, as Kevin, you spoke earlier, going in the gym, bringing the seniors down to the eighth grade. The eighth grade's up here for a day. And here is, here's data that shows us that it's working. It's working. And I think every single year, if we continue this method, you're gonna see the numbers get lower and lower and lower. Because a lot of people don't know truly what we offer in this district. And we offer a lot, we offer a lot, you know? And, and I'm glad to see that the numbers are going in the direction they're going.
And there was a time in education where you didn't have to market to your own customers.
Right.
And now you really do.
Now you do.
We really do. And I think we have so many great things to offer that, I, you know, like to your point, like, people just need to be aware of what's available. And, you know, the amazing, the amazing programs and the.
It's a big world out there.
And I agree like it is. And with, off all the programs that we have, you know, we, we got a bank in our school, so. We're, we're trying to keep them and bring them in, so I agree. Arts, athletics and activities.
Kyra kinda stole my thunder a little bit at the beginning, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best. I wanna thank the Milford High School coaches, advisors and facilitators who shared their programs with our middle school students and their families. The Milford High School gym was filled with, was filled with people and the event was very successful. It was clear to see that Milford High School offers a wealth of opportunities for students who are interested in sport, a visual or performing art. And we saw the performing arts here earlier tonight, they were fantastic. Service organizations or affinity groups. These diverse offerings provide students with a rich experience during high school that supports the development of a well-rounded individual. The number of offerings and the enthusiasm of the coaches and our current students is really infectious. You walk through that gym when that's going on and you see the pride of, you know, every single program. Mr. Consigli, actually, a student was, he's always infectiously enthusiastic. And apparently it's just been promoted to superintendent.
So when you're done with your.
But he actually, he actually engaged with a gentleman who was starting a new club. Do you wanna talk about that just for two seconds?
Oh, yes.
Cause I thought it was fantastic. He was coding, he was a coder.
Yeah, the coding guy, yeah.
I was there too.
Yep. Um, Mr. Calery actually pointed me in his direction. So, I, I, what's his name?
Andrew.
Andrew, yes, thank you. Andrew was interested in coding and unfortunately, we didn't have a coding club here. So he started his own club and he's, he's actually working down with Mr. Nelson, Dan Nelson, in his room. And although Dan's not formally an advisor, he's there. But the, Andrew brought in his own, his own group and there's probably four or five kids, he said, that are involved in that, which is, it's great. It's great that kids have the initiative to, to start groups if there's something that we don't offer.
And the, the other piece is fantastic is the adults jump in and support it.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, Dan Nelson, when he heard somebody was interested in coding, his like radar went right up and, you know, he supported him, which, which I think is awesome.
For the benefit of those who are, are home and maybe watching, may not know what coding is, can you just give a quick?
I wish I knew a lot about it. But, but it's basically, yeah, writing computer codes to, for whatever's on the screen to do something.
I think, I think what he was doing when, when, when I went and saw he had a little iPad like this and he was showing, they were creating a program for PON. Although I told him he was thirty years late, he was like, it didn't matter, he was still gonna do it anyway. It was great because he could see how he was doing it and coding it as like it was an old school video game. It's nice that you said thirty, it's forty. Forty. Dating myself.
So, there are more than twenty-five clubs and societies and more than seventy varsity and sub varsity teams at the high school. Additionally, we recently started a unified sports program for our students with special needs. It's been, I think, an unbelievable addition to the high school, both athletically and culturally. This is one of three major events we sponsor to share all the amazing opportunities available in Milford High School. The other two events are a presentation for both seventh and eighth grade students at Stacy Middle School and a tour of Milford High School for eighth graders. The presentations highlight many of our academic programs, including our nineteen advanced placement courses, our hotel and hospitality and business and banking programs, early college offerings, video production, computer science, robotics, engineering and I go on. There's just unbelievable opportunities at the high school and these programs really, I think, educate parents, students and the broader community too. Because a lot of, a lot of folks just don't know what we, what we have going on here. So it was a great night.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I was there as well. It was, it was packed when I got there and when I left, there was still more people coming in. So it was, it was a good crowd and I think I've, this is the second time I've gone there. It keeps getting bigger and bigger.
And the, and the different advisors try to one-up each other. Cause like last year, I didn't see a lot of trophies, now there's trophies.
Yeah, they were all over the place.
They're, they're putting, they're putting their bling out.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I was, I didn't go this year, but I went last year and I think there's just so much to be said for, you know, when you watch your eighth grader walk through that high school gym and how intimidated they feel. They don't know what their place is yet and they don't really belong yet. But having the high school come to Stacy, having them understand what their options are, having them see that stuff firsthand and having that opportunity to walk around with your parents. I found as, as a parent, my biggest challenge was sending a child to high school. You know, when you send off to kindergarten, you know they're being nurtured and it's a little community and high school, they're expected to be an adult and they're expected to find their way. So the more opportunities, I think there's the whole marketing thing that we're talking about to promote how great the district is. But the real benefit is to the students because the more opportunities they have, the easier it is, you know, to be champions like that when they get here. So it, the programs are so valuable.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Moving on, the report of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Consigli.
In your packet, I provided you with a white paper written by Jay McIntyre and Grant Wiggins, the quote unquote experts of, of Understanding by Design. I thought I'd just take a couple of minutes and explain what that is to everybody. I know that we talk about it. We talk about the professional development that we offer for teachers, but I wanna make sure everyone understands why, why we're doing it. Understanding, let me back up one second. If you recall, one of our, our goals, our district goals is to focus more on student-centered learning. We found that, that Understanding by Design helps us to get to that goal, helps us to, to focus on students. And really, if I, I bring it back even further to when I was in school, when you guys were in school, if you remember, teachers were, were seen as the all-knowing. They were the ones with the knowledge and they were just gonna pass on what they knew to, to everybody in the room and, and that's what we learned. We learned what the teacher decided we needed to learn. Now, because of these, we don't need somebody to tell us what we need to know. If we need to know something, we can look it up. The most important part about learning is, is the, the transfer rather than the acquisition. So what can you do with the knowledge that you know? That's what we're looking for with, with Understanding by Design. And I think, as I reflect back on today, in the four different groups that, that have come before you, those are perfect examples of, of what the end result of an Understanding by Design unit would be. You know, we saw, the first thing we saw with those three, the string, three string players. Mr. Bowday, in his mind, had this song that he wanted those students to learn. He had to get each one of those kids to, to learn their different part and then put it together and then have them perform it. If you think about a, a basketball game, if you think about a cheerleading competition, think about all the different parts that need to happen and all the different small goals that have to be put together to create this larger goal. And that's, that's really the, the essence of Understanding by Design. I think that, I think it makes sense for our students, I think it makes sense for our teachers. The, the more that we can get kids to get into positions where they're transferring what they're learning, the more, the better off they'll be later down the line. And when we talk about college and career readiness, that's what we're trying to get them to do. We're trying to get them to apply what they know and do something original with it. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about it?
If I may, I think, I think Craig, the important thing of it is that you're teaching them to be thinkers, you're teaching them to be confident, to believe in themselves. I saw, and, and when I read this, I thought about this, I saw a great interview with Bill Parcells. And a lot of people don't know that Bill Parcells coached under Bear Bryant. And they said to him, what was the greatest lesson that Bear Bryant ever taught you? And he said, well, that's very simple. He said, what is it? He said, he taught me that if I couldn't get sixty-five young men to believe that they could go out and win a football game, don't even take them out of the locker room. Confidence. Believe in yourself, you know? You know, I, I talk a lot about how things have changed in the world today, paradigms, you know, being in management, you know. An employee comes up to you and says, geez, you know, I think we really ought to do this and, you know, this might work better. Sometimes being an old school, your first reaction is, well, we don't do it that way, why don't you? That's exactly what this is, is have the ability to, as an educator, to listen and say, this might be, this might be a direction that we wanna go. This might be how I wanna educate the student. And so you give them the confidence to be able to speak up, to come up with ideas, to be thinkers, to be confident. And I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's a great way to go in education. Cause that's the way the world is.
Yeah, rather than marching through a textbook.
Exactly.
You know, I think, you know, that echoes from Mike's comments, but, you know, when it comes to education, it, it has, it has changed so much over the years. You know, thinking back to, as you said, when we were going back through school. The goal of those teachers, and I think it's been the goal of teachers all the way through, since, since education, since the beginning of education, was to engage students so that you could, you could capture their minds and, and get them engaged into, into learning. That was never a small feat, whether it was a thousand years ago or a hundred years ago or thirty years ago. I would say today, it's that much more challenging because of the advancements in technology. Trying to keep the attention span of, of a young person is never easy, as someone who's raised until. It's, it's really, really challenging now. There's all kinds of studies and, and research and I'm, I'm sure you guys have seen all this and I know I have, and we all have as well. But trying to engage a young person and the millennial generation that we're working with right now is very, very challenging. So I, I, I love this idea of really, rather than say, you know what, that we're doing it this way because it's the way we've always done things, which is probably my least favorite answer to a question when we talk, well, why can't we do it this way? The answer shouldn't be, because it's the way we've always done it. So I'm, I'm, I'm very excited to see that this is the, a direction we're heading in Milford Public Schools. Again, it's just another way that, to engage students, to get them, to get their minds to open up and, and deliver on that educational promise that we, that we make every single year to our students and to our, and to our parents. So I, I think it's great and, and look forward to seeing, look forward to seeing what the results are as, as, as it comes because of this and engaging and, and expanding this program. So I, I think that's great.
I agree with everything that Scott and Mike have said already. I know that, I think at the last meeting, we just approved a number of staff members to go to the conference later this spring, a large number of staff members. So are you planning that as kind of the kickoff to, or do you feel like this is already well underway in the district?
We have, we've probably trained a hundred and ten staff members so far with this, with two-day trainings. I don't, I look at those as, as kickoffs and I think we need a whole lot more coaching to go along with it. I, I, I don't like the, the one and done or the two and done and think that we're all set and we're ready to go. I think, I think as this rolls along, teachers are gonna have a lot of questions, especially if they're writing their own units. So, I think the conference is a great way for people to see how other folks in the, the nation are, are using the UBD framework. And in fact, Jay McIntyre will probably be there. So I mean, if you're gonna learn, you might as well learn from the guy that invented it, right? So that's why I think the conference is good, cause you can hear from the, the, the people that are experts in the, the field, so.
And so when teachers are doing the curric- are we using Google for curriculum mapping now?
Yeah, um, we, we are trying to build our own, we, we built our own template for UBD, which is on Google. But we're still trying to figure out how to put it into like a team drive or something so that if a person ends up retiring or whatever, they don't walk away with all the curriculum. Um, but we're still trying to figure out how to put it into like a team drive or something, so that if a person ends up retiring, whatever, they don't walk away with all the curriculum that they've already done. So, we're still working on that.
Is the understanding right now, um, that any new lessons that are being developed will be using this, Understanding by Design framework and template?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
That's great.
Craig? Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Craig. I appreciate it. Um, next item on the agenda is report of Assistant Superintendent, yep, Superintendent Business Human Resources, Kathy?
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Chair. I have for the committee's, uh, approval this evening, six warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I have a motion. Motion by Mike, second by John. All in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
I have a motion by Scott, second by John. All in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollars.
I have a motion by John, second by Scott. All in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and nineteen cents.
I have a motion by Jen, second by Mike. All in favor?
The next warrant is in the amount of two thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion by Scott, second by Mike. All in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of two thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents.
I have a motion by Jen, second by John. All in favor? Yes?
The committee also has a request in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for course reimbursement.
I have a motion from Jen, second by Mike. All in favor?
The committee also has for their, um, review, the latest appointments from our previous meeting. And also, the committee has this evening, a request for vending machine allocation, which essentially is in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars from Mr. Ottlin, uh, for which he has requested, um, programs from college and career readiness, um, down to creating new clubs, as well as supporting freshman orientation. These funds are generated by town meeting, um, in the spring, reallocating our vending machine dollars that are, are generated in our high school, and that is in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred. It does require a vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I just a quick question if I can. Kathy, what are we generally allocating these assets for? Where are they coming, what, I, what do we, where do they usually go? What do we usually spend the money on?
The revenue is generated at the high school, and the revenue stays here, and these, the requests that we have in front of you are, uh, new areas that he's trying to support, as well as continue a few small programs.
I, I guess, uh, uh, fun- fundamentally, I have no issue with it. It's more of just, uh, whenever we're shifting assets, the finite budget, um, the numbers in vending machines have been way, way down over the last several years. Uh, it's not due to mismanagement, it's the, unfortunately, with some of the changes and some of the-
Healthy foods.
And some of the healthy foods, um, they're not selling things that students wanna eat as much anymore. As much as we would love for them to eat them more often, the, the interest level's a little lower. Um, so the sales are down. It, it's not anything else other than sales are down. Um, so if we're moving assets, what's, what's, there's winners and losers then, potentially? So, are we removing assets from something that we're trying to fund from someplace else? Or is it, uh, that's, I just wanna understand that we're not, I wanna make sure there's not a group that's going to financially be suffering as a result of an reallocation of funds someplace else.
No, these were essentially, uh, he, the building principal reached out to different groups in the entire high school, and asked for, I'm gonna refer to as mini-grants.
Okay.
For all of the teachers, in which that he could support, that currently are not in the operating budget. Um, in addition, the, the top program, the college and career readiness, that's something that, um, Josh himself put together, and he wants to get kids out to the, um, area colleges, so that he could do some new, um, college field trips. For kids. So, that's a complete new program. It's not moving anything. It's recre- it's actually creating something.
Okay. No further questions.
Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, I, I personally, um, I would like to see the high school principal come in and explain those programs to us before we vote on it, seeing that they're new initiatives, just so we have a better understanding of it. Um, you know, not that twelve thousand is a lot of money, but twelve thousand is a lot of money. If he could just take five or ten minutes to a school committee meeting, just come in and say, this is what I'm looking to do, and this is the reasons why I'm looking to do this. I think from this school committee member, and I think maybe other members of the committee, it might make us more comfortable before we vote on it. So, that would be my request, is that we table this, and ask him to come in and speak to us at the next school committee meeting.
I'll second the table.
I don't have a problem with that. Scott, second? Anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Just wanna table.
Table. We're going to table the reallocation of the vending machine money, and have Mr. Ottlin come in and explain where the money's going.
Okay.
All right. And we have a gift as well?
We do.
We have a-
It is the season.
Generous gift from Dairy Queen in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Science Olympiad. Um, thank you very much. Can I get a, a motion to accept this gift? Motion from Scott, second from Mike. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Chair, I think, if I may, out-of-state travel.
Um, and we, yeah.
We, we just approved that. We just-
Oh, you did?
That was for the Chilis.
That's a true choice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
We moved it up.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is subcommittee updates. The first one is going to be budget. Um, Scott, would you?
Yeah, so we, John will do it. John's gonna do this one. I'll take this, John. Um, yeah, so we met, the subcommittee met with the FinCom subcommittee on Monday evening. Um, all of us were there, or most of us were there. Um, and, you know, it was a subcommittee meeting on both levels. Um, and we really got up to speed on, uh, filling in, uh, the, there's been a little bit of change in their structure of, of membership on their committee. But we brought them up to speed on where we are with some of our ongoing projects, which is, um, you know, the playground that funding was allocated for at, uh, town meeting. Uh, past projects or ongoing projects being the elevators, uh, the elevator at Stacy, the doors at Stacy, uh, where we are with technology, uh, our Chromebook initiative. And then we really, I think, discussed our approach to upcoming budget season. Um, as we all know, we have our first meeting for budget season on January sixth, which is a Saturday. I think I have that date right, uh, from memory. Um, we invited them to, to attend, which is always an open meeting, but, um, I think we covered some of the, um, disconnects that we've had over the past couple of years, where we spent so much time during budget season o- on, on what we're doing, and we assume that they're up to speed on what we've discussed, and what we've, you know, tentatively approved and, and, and denied, and, um, but we, again, I think there's been a disconnect, so we're, we're looking to bring in the, the FinCom, I, I guess, at a little bit earlier stage.
Yeah, we, yeah, we invited them to join to, to come and observe the meeting. It's an open public meeting, it's open to the public, and, and all, all, anyone's out welcome. Um, we've invited them in the past, that we have their commitment that at least one, if not, uh, the bulk of their membership, will, will try to attend that Saturday meeting. I, I think it just sort of opens that door to, you know, some, add some of the, to some of the comments that John made. It sort of opens that door to, and, and opens that lens up a little bit into, you know, the process that we go through, and that's, you know, we, we actually talked a little about during that meeting. The fact that by the time we even get to January, which is still, for the, for those that are watching at home, the budget process for most school systems in most towns doesn't start generally until March or April. We started our process in October, with the, each of the different teachers going, and, and different, um, curriculum team leaders and departments, and department heads going to the principals and submitting their budget requests. Then the principals go through their vetting p- process and their, you know, decision-making process and prioritization. They then bring that to the administration, go through that, and then they go through their pairing down, and then they prepare that for us. So, the, the budget's actually already gone through. By the time it gets to us on January sixth, it's the third version of that budget, and, and adjustments and prioritization, and pairing down, and subtractions, and additions, and, and movements. And then we go through a first pass of it, just as our seven-member board on January sixth, and, and I think just getting through that description with them on Monday, of, of the, of the full vetting process, that this, as I said, most towns start this in March. As a school system, we started it in October. And, and that's, that, that just really goes to show, it's one of the reasons why I think the town of Milford financially is in the position that it's in, which is an enviable one in the state, um, is because of that financial discipline. Uh, and, and that, that commitment that we all shall, I mean, and as a school committee, for those who don't know, that may be watching at home, there's a lot of things that we do as a school committee. We're really, if, if, if anyone had had an opportunity to read the, the charter of what school system, school committees now, as a result of ed reform, are really charged with, we're pri- predominantly charged with two things. One is budget, the other is policy, and then we have responsibility for the, 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 the hiring and firing of the superintendent of schools, the director of special education. That, that's it. I mean, we're, you know, we don't get involved in hiring of teachers or principals. In fact, actually, we're specifically restricted by that. So, I think just going through that with the finance committee, I think helped. I, I, that, my opinion coming out of that meeting was that, was a really positive one, probably one of the more positive ones I've been to in six years, um, of doing this. And, and I, I think just started to get them to understand kind of, this isn't something we just show up in April and say, here. And I don't think they always thought that. I, I think this just gives a little more insight.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I, I, again, I think there was a little bit of a disconnect in the past few years that I've been involved, and, um, you know, we were trying to get them up to speed on where we stood in April, and we assumed that they, they maybe were aware of everything that we've discussed, you know, from October to January into April, and, um, that's really, probably wasn't the case, and I think we're in a, a much better spot moving forward right now than we have been, um, since I've been involved. And, and I think that's a, it's really just a positive experience and, and environment right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, no, I, I agree. I think I was at that meeting as well, and it, it, it's better that we get on the same page, and they know exactly how this process works. So, I think it'll, I think it'll work out pretty well.
Yeah, I think we all ultimately share the same goal, which is to do the best we can for the school system.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with what the town can afford, and, and, and being just. I mean, we're not, we're not looking for as much as we can get.
Right.
And we're not looking to save as much as we possibly can. We're looking to do the best. I mean, e- everything in life is a balance, including the school system and our, and our town budget, and, and our t- you know, what we're taxing taxpayers, and I, I think we're really all on the same, on the same page, coming from the same place.
I agree.
Thank you, John.
Uh, next item is marketing and communications.
I, I can, I can touch on that, actually.
You wanna talk to Jim's on here?
And actually, I, I think my update on the athletics, arts, and activities, kinda hit a lot of what we talked about.
Okay. Policies.
Policies?
Yeah, so we had, we met just before that, but just before this meeting, we had a meeting this out, uh, this evening. Um, and we really tackled three policies, but they're all, they really ultimately tie into one thing, and this is with regards to the facility and fee. Uh, and you schedule both for our fields, as well as for all of the facilities in Milford Public Schools. Um, we need to make some adjustments, and just, and, 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 you know, some of these policies are, are, uh, getting to have a couple of miles on the tires. We've, we've seen some, some loopholes that were left in it, and we're looking to just sort of tighten up a little bit, and make some adjustments. Um, and, and really, some of the, just as an example, some of the language, and I, I think we're ready, we're gonna be ready for our first reading at our next meeting in December. Um, it's really, again, it's three policies. It's the use of facility fee schedule, it's the use of school facilities, it's Milford High School and Woodland Elementary, now Woodland, um, uh, elementary school turf, field complex. So, we've added that on as well. We need to adjust that. Um, a- as well as, you know, we've, we've got some, um, we've had to make some adjustments, just with regards to some, some loopholes that were put in there. So, uh, we'll be ready for our, our first reading at our next meeting, um, and have that on the agenda for that, and, and I think we'll be ready to go on that one. I don't think that we'll, hopefully they'll, you know, you guys will have a cha- a chance to see that early and, and review. There's been some things, just, and we can address it when we go through the policy. There's been some, some things that I think have been brought to the, to the attention of many committee members, myself being one of them. Um, with regards to some groups that may be using different schools, uh, in town. People are feeling uncomfortable, um, with, with regards to some of the, the, very specifically, there's a church on the way the policy was originally written years and years and years ago. We have a church that's actually using the school, uh, the way that, using one of the schools on a Sunday. It's not having anything to do with schooling or anything like that, but they're, they're renting the facility, as they have the right to do, based on the way the policy had been written years ago. Um, because there wasn't really an approval process, if you will, and, and we're looking to, you know, try and, try and get some more guidelines around that, and, and make sure that we're, we're adjusting some of those things, so. More to come in our next meeting.
Thank you, Scott. Um, and not only agenda, but I think we wanna touch on it, it was from last time, um, the school culture and climate, Mike?
Yes, we did have a meeting, and, um, let me start by saying, um, it was very positive. Um, it's amazing the excitement, um, of the educators that were in that room, but also, I was, um, I was very pleased to see how open they were. Um, they weren't afraid to sit in that room with the superintendent of schools, with a school committee member, and not share some of the concerns that they have in the schools that they're in. Um, so there was a lot of positive, very positive things, uh, things that are going on in the district. Um, there are some, some issues, and Kevin and I sat after the meeting, and we talked about it. Kevin has already started working on them, and they're small, they're small. Um, but they're things that need to be addressed, and, uh, you know, we're gonna move forward with it, and, uh, we're gonna talk about it at the next meeting. But again, I, I, I was very comfortable to, to sit there and have people actually be comfortable enough to open up and say, you know, in my school, you know, these are things that I see that, you know, or educators or administration in, in, in my school, you know, think that are, are areas that need to be looked at. And, you know, we made many, many notes, and we promised them that we would definitely look into and move forward, and we've already started, so. It was a very positive meeting. It was.
Do you, any, any, I don't wanna throw anyone in the spot, but the grades that we're talking about, that might have had some concerns?
Well, it was pre K through twelve. Everybody kinda gave a, gave a presentation, and everybody had, you know, an issue or two with the, with the.
Yeah, it was every building. It was every building. But it was impressive to see that they were comfortable enough, um, to open up and talk about them, to talk about them, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, it was a good productive conversation.
Yeah, it was healthy. It was very healthy, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mike. Um, next item agenda, item on the agenda is future agenda items. Anybody? Any future agenda? Mike?
Uh, I mean, Scott? That's Mike. Mike? Is that really two things? Really two things.
All for the best.
Um, one is, is you, you mentioned about unified, uh, unified sports program that we've developed. Um, I, one thing that I would personally like to see as a school committee member is, is just as we had a couple of groups come in here this evening, I'd love to have, get an update, and, and potentially have some of the, either the captains, a couple of the coaches, maybe a couple of the students, and student representatives from the Unified Sports come in, just to kinda talk about the program. I, I really do think it's, it's such a huge, huge piece. Uh, I had an opportunity to attend, um, though it's not directly connected to our schools, it, it is indirectly. I, I know Mike was there, I think a number of others were there. Um, our friends in the Milford area, Special Olympics and Special Athletes, um, they have an annual event. For those who are not familiar with it, started about sixteen years ago, and it actually, their first event was held in the basement, um, function room of the, of the New England Steakhouse. There were about ten to fifteen people there. Um, when that first started to grow, they then said, you know, there, there's something really here. They started getting more people involved, and, and Mike was there with me. Uh, we competitively bid on a couple of silent auction items.
Leaving you and my daughter with my credit card.
Right. Yes. And I, I, I won and lost simultaneously on that. Um, but that being said, um, for those who don't know, that, that event that started with ten people in the basement of the New England Steakhouse, um, the Portuguese club holds three hundred and fifty people. They ended up actually running out of seats. Um, I think the estimated count was, they sold over, they sold over three hundred and fifty tickets. Um, they ended up with people having to stand, and actually get, people wanting to give up their seats and everything else. Didn't run out of food. Thank God for Louis Piazza. Um, he just kept, he just keeps cooking, but, uh, you, you, it, it, it's grown to that level. Um, so the fact that we've got Unified Sports, Jen Walsh is a, is an integral part of, I think, both of those programs. Um, she's one of the chairwoman, uh, one of the chairpeople of that committee. So, I think if we can have them come, I think that would be phenomenal.
Absolutely. And I, I've been to a couple of those, and they, they're fabulous. I was a little upset that I missed it this year, but they are, it is a good time.
I know you've been to one of those. The, the other one is, is Craig, uh, just going back to something, it's sort of future gen item as well as old, uh, old business simultaneously. Craig, it's something we went over last year. You were working on sort of a homework whole review, um, sort of a general consensus around the approach to homework around Milford Public Schools. I'm hoping for a future gen- I'm hoping for a future agenda item. Can you can kind of give us an update of where you are in that work? Um, in that body of work and, and sort of what, where are we today and, and what are we hoping to move towards? It's gonna be that time of year where, um, I'm starting to get some phone calls, the phones are starting to ring again. And homework's starting to, homework's starting to creep back into the conversation of, uh, multi-hours of homework again, so.
Okay.
If we can get back into that.
Yeah, we'll probably look at that for January, Scott.
Yeah, no, I know next meeting's already very well full, but yeah, we'll do that for January. That'd be great.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else for a future agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, not necessarily a future agenda item, but if I could speak to what Scott was talking about, the FOMO, FOMASA banquet or Special Olympics banquet. My first year going, um, I was amazed as Scott spoke of the number of people that were there. But you talk about community, and when you go to an event like that, you really realize what a unique community this truly is because there was a lot of people there that, um, don't have a, a child or a brother or a sister or, you know, somebody with, with a disability, I guess is the word that I'm looking for. Not that that's the better, the best choice of words, but, but they support. They support. And, um, you watch when the auction goes off and you, and you watch what, what people are bidding on. And you know what, truthfully, maybe some of the stuff you're bidding on, you're probably never gonna use, but it's for a good cause. It's for a good cause. And you watch, you know, when they were dancing, Scotty was dancing all night long. I mean, it was just unbelievable. But, um, a great sense of community, you know, great, great sense of community. And, you know, as Scott made reference to, next year, they're already, they're moving it. They, they's taking it to the DoubleTree because unfortunately, not that they want to, but it was jammed. It was jammed. And, uh, they need, they need more space. They know next year, they're probably gonna sell over four hundred tickets. So, I just want to, you know, say that, um, I know it's not a future agenda item, but it's just another example of what we have right here in this community, how people support one another. It's very unique.
Thank you, Mike.
It was quite an event.
I agree, absolutely. Thank you. Next item, old business. The old business. All right. And before we adjourn, we do have, um, executive session tonight, so I would like to take a rule call for executive session.
What's the reason we're going into a executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, reason for, um, executive session is a sick family class.
Aye?
Yes.
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 All right. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Got a motion from Jen, second from Mike. All in favor? Thank you. And have a good night.